Please shut your cell phones off or mute if you would. Time being nine o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Dan.
Yeah.
Don. Sherry.
Here. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
None.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda. I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the agenda as presented. For the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, the agenda is approved. At this time, would any citizen like to make a public comment? There being none, public comment is closed. Item number five is on the schedule for 9:10. I think we can go ahead and start early, it's 9:05. Property and liability insurance discussion. So Dan and Don, if you'd like to lead this.
So first, I just want to open up with, we received this information from the pool yesterday at about 9:30, is that correct?
Last night, 9:30?
Yes.
PM.
And that was the answer to the questions that we were raising before, some of them.
That being what this packet is?
I guess so. I haven't seen it.
Okay.
There's some more email correspondence that you and I got done that the rest of the commission didn't get.
I didn't get any email.
Can you forward that now?
Yes. I think this meeting was set up to allow all the commissioners to ask questions that they had concerning the recommendations from the two companies and I'd suggest that you just go ahead and ask your questions. We have representatives here that can respond to them. I have none. I'll have some summary comments, but I have no questions to ask at this point in time.
I guess for starters, where are we at with total insurance today? What's covered and what are our premiums? And I don't know who wants to take that. Because that was one thing that was, we didn't have that information at the last meeting.
And I think when you're talking about total premiums, that's total for our insurance, emergency management, ambulance, everything. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion comes in is because from what I understand, we have at least two, if not three, different policies, is that correct? So what we need to do, and we're comparing them, is the total of all of them.
Right.
The coverage of everything versus the coverage of everything.
Patty, did you pass this email, this sheet out?
Yep, they have it.
So EMC covers county, the buildings.
Is that, is that this one?
It's that one, but then I added on the bottom, the search and rescue and the.
I don't know if I have.
Oh, I don't.
We're all talking the same thing. Thank you.
Bottom line, I mean, bottom line, the total insurance cost was in insurance, so that's search and rescue, and that's the ambulance, those are two separate policies with one beacon.
Sorry, brokered out through Fisher rounds. That's better. So is $215,000 roughly, give or take a little bit. We've added some equipment to the highway department. I think it charged $30 or something like that. So $189,000 and some change for the EMC policy, which covers your law enforcement, the jail, general liability, inland marine, umbrella, property, auto.
And that's at the $6 million, $6 million level for all of those, correct?
Well, so we'll go through that here. General liability, you got a $1 million occurrence and a $2 million aggregate, meaning you could have two $1 million liability losses in one year before you exhaust your limits. You go, then you go to the law enforcement, same thing, 1 million, 2 million. You go to the linebacker, you have a linebacker being the public officials E and O in EPLI, which is Employment Practices Liability Coverage, that's a $1 million policy. And then you, with the retroactive date of 1993, and then you go to an umbrella policy, which is 5 million that covers, goes on top of all of those. Obviously, that's an occurrence. So you could have, any one loss could potentially have a $6 million limit of liability, if that makes sense. That's all with EMC, and that is separate from the one beacon policy, the search and rescue and the ambulance. So if you move to those, search and rescue has a $1 million occurrence with a $5 million aggregate, meaning you could have five separate $1 million losses in a year before your limits are exhausted. On top of that, you have an umbrella policy at 4 million occurrence and 5 million aggregate. So figure out the scenarios there.
So you're saying they can, you'll stack the coverage?
Not stacking on top, EMC is not going to stack on top of one beacon, you have separate limits of liability.
Okay.
So technically, search and rescue could have five $1 million losses and still have their umbrella coverage, you know, for $4 million on top of that. Gets a little confusing because they're not, I know Steve could probably talk a little bit more than I can, he's required to carry certain limits. So you go to the emergency medical side of things or emergency management, you got the same $1 million liability with a $5 million aggregate. You had an umbrella at $4 million occurrence, plus these $8 million aggregate umbrella, so you could technically have two $4 million aggregate losses on the umbrella with the emergency medical, if that makes sense. And then you go to the search and rescue, they've got their own equipment, they got their own autos, same thing with the emergency man, you know, ambulance, they've got their own, all of the buildings are going to be covered under the EMC county policy. Contents coverage then would roll over into their separate policies, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's one question I had, is make sure we're not double covered there.
Correct. No, no. And then they've got portable equipment that's covered for both of them.
Did this include the cybersecurity quote?
No, no.
What would that be in addition to this?
About, it's $1,200 here, I've got, I handed out some copies last time, but I printed out a few more this morning, so.
And that, that, what was your coverage limit for that then? Was that $500,000?
One, it looks, it's 100, again, so now you're going to have to, we'll go through the policy here and the coverages, but depending on the type of coverage, there's first party, first party response, third party response, data hacking. I mean, there's multiple coverages and they all have a slightly different limits.
I can pass them down if you've got enough.
There's two there.
Any more copies?
Patty, I think Patty has one.
Copy, it was emailed to us.
It would have been emailed as well.
This in this last email?
Yeah, I think it came.
In the email, it came from me to Patty.
In December.
Okay, okay.
No, I got one.
We do not have the cyber coverage in place because we weren't told to do that. It's something obviously you can put into place at any point in time. I did ask them to quote different deductible options, but EMC only offers the $1,000 deductible.
Speaking with Craig, our IT guy, he highly recommended it, that we get some type of cybersecurity regardless of where we go. It's important to remember, you know, our, the school district was hacked several years ago and it was very expensive. And then Hutchinson County had a cyber attack, which was very detrimental to their operations. We currently don't have any coverage regardless of the option we choose. I feel and our IT person Craig feels that this is something that we need to do, we need to have some sort of coverage.
And EMC was on the school policy as well. I mean, I wasn't around at Smith Insurance at that point in time, but it sounded like it turned out pretty well.
Okay, and then our deductibles on like property, building, vehicle, that kind of stuff.
Right, which I emailed Sherry a day or two ago, I don't know if she shared that with anybody, but yeah, vary in deductibles depending on, you know, which coverage you're looking for. Properties a $5,000 deductible, which is flat deductible, meaning any loss, wind, hail, fire, theft, $5,000. You go to, you know, you've got some deductibles on the linebacker policy, there's, which is your E and O coverage, that's a $25,000 deductible. That's gone up a little bit in the last few years, just due to recent claims history.
Could you, what is E and O, just so everybody's on the same page?
You know, so essentially, errors and emissions, sorry, yep. The auto deductibles, now we're, I'm talking EMC only, so I get it gets a little confusing because one beacon policies are a little bit lower deductibles. But just the EMC for the county is $2,000 deductibles where we have the physical damage coverage. Not every vehicle or every trailer is going to, you know, for whatever reason might be old, you don't want it, you know. So those are things you can look through and decide that you want that, then we can always add it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Is one beacon, is that like a federal program or that's geared towards emergency management?
Correct, one beacon is, well, we don't have a contract with one beacon, so it's brokered through Fisher rounds and peer. So it, I mean, they are 100% designed for the type of policy that we're purchasing from them. And so, yes, they are, you know, ambulance, search and rescue, that's what they're known for. And we also, and we do have the city fire policy with one beacon as well.
And is the city part of the pool, the SDPAA?
The city insurance is, might, you know, take out the, take out the city fire. Obviously, that's part of the one beacon policy, but the city itself is in the pool, yes.
Okay.
Did you guys ever consider being our agent if we did switch? I know that was one of the questions that we asked and.
Yep, yep.
And if you did, what would your, what would you want for your contribution to that?
I think the suggestion and or, you know, what I've been advised moving forward is that's not something that we would look to do for a couple of reasons. One, I don't believe with the pool being, you know, a non-rated company in terms of, from an insurance perspective, I don't think our E and O coverage would go over that, if that makes sense. And secondly, I think just from a pure professional agency perspective, we feel like the EMC policy is the better direction to go. And so that would be our advice.
What are the short-term costs, I think, would be around insuring losses from potential lawsuits happening in the past, whatever, 10, 15. Do you want to talk about that a little?
Right, I mean, so what I initially stated there, the prior acts on the linebacker policy, which is the decisions made by commissions, this one, the ones before you guys, you know. EMC's retroactive date is 1993, so they will, not necessarily, doesn't mean that everything's going to be covered, but they will defend you, you know, back to claims made back to 1993. You know, based on what I heard before, the pool, you know, if you buy the three years prior act, you can go back three years. I think five years was their maximum, if I remember right, or, so, I mean, the, I guess the biggest decision that you make from that standpoint is if you move from EMC, you will never get the retroactive date back to 1993, if that makes sense.
Would the deductible be the current deductible of 25,000? Or would it be the deductible at, say, deductible was $500 in 1993? Would it be the deductible it was at that time, or would it be the current one we have now?
My assumption would be it'd be the current deductible, but I would look into that for you.
That would make sense.
Right.
Any other questions for Ryan?
What is a distribution credit?
So the distribution credits, that's something that the pool offers to its members based on various things. That was the, we talked before at one of the prior meetings about loss control credits, loss ratio credits, law enforcement credits, and then after you have some experience with the pool, the renewal credit.
Do we want to give Lynn an opportunity to explain her insurance? I know she has before, but Wanda probably hasn't heard that, if that's something she wants to do.
Yeah, I wasn't here previously.
Lynn, this is Commissioner Clemish. Would you please be given like an overview? We do have a new commissioner that was sworn in since the last time you were here.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are we able to get her on the video?
No, because I am in the car, so I'm traveling today, so, so I'll ask for a little grace here. But, so basically, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance was formed in 1987 in response to a commercial hardening market back in the late, well, mid to late 80s. The commercial markets just really weren't prepared to offer the coverages that public entities were needing. And where public entities could find coverage, the costs were rather prohibitive. This is not the first time that that had happened. I don't know what will happen in the future, but the 80s, the event in the 80s is what led the legislature to feel that, that our public entities in South Dakota needed other options for taking care of their liability exposures. So the enabling statutes were created, and that's when the risk sharing pools were formed. The state of South Dakota has the people fund, the schools have a property liability pool as well as a work comp and health pool. There's the Health Pool of South Dakota, and then the S D M L Workers Compensation Fund, and then the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. All were formed right around that same time in response to that hardening market. So we started with seven and we're up to just over 434 members in the property liability pool. Our financials are posted on our website, we have a very strong financial position at this time based on a board of directors that is made up of members who are participating in the risk pool. We have three county representatives, let's see, three county, nine, yeah, nine municipal representatives. And then we have the, there are, I think it's nine. Sorry, like I said, I'm in the car. And then the executive director for the Association of County Commissioners is a permanent seat on the board, as is the executive director for the municipal league. The primary focus of the risk pools is risk management and loss control because we feel that if we are able to help you guys with the tools that you need to evaluate what your risks are and give you the resources to mitigate or, or even avoid those risks and those claims, it puts everybody in a better position. So when you join the pool, you're basically joining in with the other 434 entities, which are all public entities. And currently, it consists of counties, cities, townships, special purchasing districts such as sanitary districts, water districts, we've got ambulance districts and fire districts as well. We have recently offered the opportunity to school districts, but have not actively been quoting because we do respect that the Associated, Associated School Boards of South Dakota offers that pooling opportunity to those school districts as well. So some of the resources that you get, we have just a ton of online resources for law enforcement. We have an online training platform, and that also offers them sample and model policies that they can use. And those policies are created based on current state statutes, and then also any case law that we see come through the pipes. We have our vendor that takes a look at all of those things and makes sure that our policies are up to snuff, so to speak. And so your sheriff would have access to all of that information beginning day one. And then we have other training platforms, we've got a partnership with FirstNet Learning, which is now NeoGov, and they offer online training for pretty much any topic that you can think of. And their training has quizzes at the end, if you'd like. So if you have training assignments where you need to track success, they can do that. Both of those mechanisms have platforms where you can track who's done what training and you can assign training and things like that. We have Aurora Pictures does our online streaming, and then we also have a DVD library, and we have live training available with our partnerships for safety benefits. So a lot of our members take advantage of that for their employees who have to have their MSHA certifications renewed and things like that. Property, we have surveys done every four years so that you can make sure that the values on your current covered property are appropriate. The reason that's important is to make sure that if you have a loss, there's enough coverage in place under the blanket limit to cover all of your claims, and then also to make sure that you're paying appropriate contributions because your contribution dollars are based on the property value. So we don't want you to be paying too much or too little to make sure that everything is kosher. The loss control survey, years, with that, you'll get some loss control recommendations, probably. What we do is we base our loss control credit on those surveys and responsiveness to the surveys. Um, employment practices hotline and government practices hotline are two hotlines that we have. Basically, they're resources for your state's attorney. Employment-related questions should go to the hotline. And if there is a claim that arises out of that situation, then the $5,000 deductible that applies to employment-related claims is waived, as long as you call the hotline and follow advice of council. The program has been very successful, it's been in place approximately five years, I believe, five or six years. Government practices kind of answers all the rest of the questions that they may have other than like civil prosecution questions and bonding questions because those are not items that we would offer advice on for various reasons. Let's see, I'm trying to think of what some of the other high points are for the pool itself. Wanda, I'm not sure if you're coming to the workshops hosted by the Association of Counties later this spring, but we will be there and, and, you know, we could give you some more information there as well. Whether or not you join the pool, I'd be happy to talk with you. Coverage wise, so our property coverage is, it's a blanket coverage, it's open peril, all peril unless excluded. We also have just the flat deductible, and we quoted that based on the information that was provided by EMC. We have the, so what we did is we quoted all of your coverages under one line, one member. We didn't separate them out by department, so everything that we receive for information. So we're, as far as we know, we are quoting all of the, currently all the emergency management, search and rescue, your law enforcement, so the sheriff's department, and then your county administration. Because that is the schedule information that we received. So in the spreadsheet that we sent, there were various limits, we quoted one, three, and six million. We do not do umbrellas, and we do not have aggregate limits. Because with aggregates, every time a claim is paid, that actually erodes your aggregate. So it just, that's not the theory that we wanted to follow. So if you have $6 million in coverage, you get that for as many claims as you have. So hopefully you don't have $6 million claims, but if you do, then that's the limit you have for each occurrence. The deductibles, we quoted a $0 deductible, we have a $3,000 deductible for law enforcement claims, and then the $5,000 employment practices deductible. But as we talked about, you can get that waived by participating in the employment practices hotline. Our cyber coverage is included, the limits for our cyber, all coverages are a $500,000, or, yeah, $500,000 aggregate limit for cyber, and that's included, there's no additional cost and a $50,000 deductible. If you wanted other coverage, like additional coverage, we would quote that, and then we would basically give you your own standalone policy for any additional cyber. We've had a couple members get quotes, but at the end of the day, they've opted to just keep the, the included cyber coverage that comes with the pool. I think that's the high points. Do you have, I talk kind of fast, so do you have any questions? Anything specific that you were wondering about?
No, I think what threw me off was the distribution credits didn't have brackets around them.
Oh, sure. And then, so just to kind of give you guys a heads up, so if Roger's team decides not to work with the county, if you come to the pool, then you would deduct the agent commission line off of our quote. And then you would just, we would work directly with you, we wouldn't, we wouldn't then talk with Roger and his team because they wouldn't be representing you. But we are willing to do, either way, we've worked with Roger in the past and continue to work with him and his team on the city coverages, so certainly have no problem doing that.
Lynn, remind me and the audience here, you said like there were 400 and some municipalities and counties that you service.
Correct.
And how many servicing agents do you have to serve those people?
So it's up to our members if they want to use agents or not. I would say the bulk of people, of members who have agents are smaller entities. Some of our smaller towns and cities have agents.
Let's not consider them at this point in time.
Okay, um, for the actual counties, so we have, I believe, 55 of 66 counties, I think. And again, you'll have to give me some grace because I'm driving. I would say, I think, less than 10% of those actually use agents.
So your pool, how many agents are in your pool to service all the municipalities and counties?
So we don't partner specifically with any one agent. If, if a member wants to have a relationship with an agent, then we just work with that agent. We don't have any established, like, okay, you have to go to like Roger's agency to get our coverage, or you have to go to, we don't have any of that established. If a member wants.
Lynn, Lynn, I think what Don is trying to ask is how many people do you employ to service?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so there are six of us on staff at the pool. And so for Yankton County, I would be your primary point of contact. And then when I'm not available, then Jerry Crambeck would be your second um primary point of contact. But you always have access to the balance of the team, which is Dave Feifley, the executive director, Deb Corkel, who is the executive assistant, and then our underwriting team, which is Christina and Petra. And all of our cell phone numbers are listed on the website, so you can get ahold of any one of us at any time.
What my concern is uh is the response time to inquiries, especially from ambulance chair EMS to issues that they may have. I I I think uh I think you're a very busy lady and you've got a lot on your plate. But we asked for some of this information two or three weeks ago, and we get it at nine o'clock last night.
Well, with all due respect, we received the um updated auto schedules that we had asked for in the beginning of December um yesterday morning at nine AM. So we needed to go through and compare all of the information we had previously with the new information to make sure that there wasn't anything additional. So um that's in large part why we, I mean, why the late notice and but it also reflects too that we're not just eight to five.
Thank you.
Sure. And I would invite you guys to talk to some of the other counties, you know, to find out if they have any issues with service. Honestly, we've not received in the past, I've, in the four years that I've worked for the pool, I've not had any service complaints. Because that is something I take very seriously and very personally, not just for myself, but for my whole team.
Lynn, this is Commissioner Flemish. Could you go over the employment practice um hotline and and how that works?
Certainly. So the employment practices hotline was established to help um serve as a resource for members who um had employment-related questions. It was formed first and foremost as a response to a significant increase in in employment-related claims. We were finding that some members didn't have appropriate employment policies and some where they had policies weren't even following them. So we implemented a deductible system, but then wanted to make um, wanted to really make it not a punishment, but an opportunity to help them see what needed to be done and to handle those situations appropriately. So if a member has an employment-related question, it can be any type of question. Um, it could be FMLA. We had a lot of COVID questions this past year. Um, it could be hiring, firing, disciplinary action, any of those types of questions. As long as they call before action is taken, then our employment um practices counsel. We have two of them established, one East River, one West River, to make sure there's enough coverage. Um, we'll talk through through the situation with the member. Consider policies that are in place, con- consider state laws that might apply to the situation and make recommendations and advice on how that situation may be handled. So as long as our members are calling the hotline before action is taken, if a claim arises, then the deductible would be waived. If the claim arises and and they called the hotline and followed advice, then there's no deductible regardless of the outcome of the claim. If they, oh, yeah, sorry.
Who who covers your claims, whether it be employment, whether it be um, you know, field to decisions? Is that in-house or is that a pool similar to?
So Claims Associates is our claims administrator. And so I think the the county already participates in the SDML Work Comp Fund, and they also handle the work comp claims, that agency. So your claims people would come out of Sioux Falls. So it'd be Jeff Jarris and his team would do the claims administration. And then any coverage issues, the pool um gets involved. We have coverage committee meetings, and then we have claims committee meetings. If there's um losses that exceed a hundred thousand dollars, then we have um, then the pool takes a more active as far as administrative staff. We take a more active role in those claims handling problems or situations. If you have a problem, you can come to me at any time, and then we work with Claims Associates to figure out, you know, what the hangup is, if there's an issue with an adjuster or or how an adjustment was made. Those are, so that's where I would step in.
Lynn, for those claims that go to court, do you use in-house lawyers or do you use an outside firm?
So we have panel counsel selected. Um, we have um counsel that we assign claims to. It's not in-house. So some of the firms locally that are on the panel counsel would be, we have Woods Fuller, the Voice Law Firm, um Fuller and Williamson. Uh, let's see, um, May Adam is in Pierre. We've got uh I'm trying to think that the Billion Law Firm, they all separated and went their separate ways, but we've got like Mark Arton, a couple attorneys there. Um, I think previously we had talked a little bit about some zoning questions. And so we would bring um the Richardson Law Firm out of Aberdeen to take care of some of those zoning questions and stuff like that. Um, so no, it's it's not in-house counsel. It's panel counsel um that we've selected that we consider experts in various fields that we've had some claims experience with. And when we choose counsel, we talk to the members to see if there's anyone that they prefer, and then as long as they're on the panel and we agree that, you know, they they have the level of expertise that is needed to properly defend the member, then we'll work with um that firm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Lynn, I'm going to ask you a question, and I'm not sure you're going to be able to answer it. So you're with me. If we choose to go with your firm, but we want to keep the one beacon policy, you have a ballpark estimate for what that would reduce the quote in front of us. So it essentially, you would take out um the liability for the emergency man- management team, the liability for the ambulance, uh, search and rescue and all of that out of that original quote, similar to what the city of Yankton is essentially doing with their fire department?
Right. So what I do, um, what I would do, the property side is going to be more easy because we can just identify the locations that are already covered on the one beacon. But I'd want to sit down with Patty because we would need to adjust the um the county's expenditures, which is what we base our liability numbers on, and deduct anything that would be budgeted for search and rescue and the ambulance um team and take those outs and then just rerate it. And so if she has time on, I think, Tuesday, I could get with her and we could talk about that budget. And then I would have underwriting just rerate it without the search and rescue.
Okay. Any other questions for Lynn? So general discussion time. So we essentially have two quotes in front of us. The one with uh EMC has essentially the six million dollar coverage. So in order to compare the two, we need to look at the six million dollar column from the pool. EMC has stated they they are not interested in doing the agent commission. So if I look at that column where it says six million on the pool, at two hundred and five thousand five hundred, we need to back out about fourteen thousand five hundred or so.
You know, maybe this is a good opportunity to talk about what coverage level. Don and I's research, we we are we want to retain six million. Law enforcement, do we want to go with something else? From from what I remember, Don, and and you, if you remember, I I think most and most of the counties had a lot less insurance. At the top is one of the top. And I'm fine if we decide six million when we we're insured compared. I believe Mini Haha has one million. Have a lot more claim. Appropriate for Mini Haha and Brown County and Pennington County. But we expended more of the ten dollars.
So that that was kind of addressed in some correspondence with Lynn, and she said there were two that had five million, two had that had four, one had two, and three had one. Lynn, if you remember that question being asked, I think I asked that in December.
Yep.
But it wasn't stated which of those counties were which. So there are some counties who do have more coverage out there. Um, the other thing about Mini Haha County is they have a much larger budget than we do um and can probably absorb a larger loss than this county can. The only reason that I I started just to compare six million to the six million is if we start comparing the six million to the three million, that's um, that's not apples to apples, I guess. And and as far as insurance goes, it's tough to compare and exact policy against each other unless we're willing to go down line item by line item. I I don't foresee that happening. So just as an overview, start comparing. You take that two hundred and five and you subtract out the fourteen, that leaves you one ninety-one um to compare to essentially a two seventeen. And that's about a twenty-six thousand dollar difference in that. And then we also have to talk about the um, the buyback policy. I'm not sure exactly what that's called, but uh, the quotes from the last meeting was seventy thousand for five years. So essentially, that difference between the the one ninety-one and the two seventeen, it would take us three years to recover that seventy thousand dollar upfront cost. If you see where I'm going with the just that general comparison. Now, the reason I asked Lynn how much that one ninety-one would decrease if we kept the one beacon, which I am a proponent to keep the one beacon. It's twenty-five thousand five hundred for that coverage. How much lower does that one ninety-one go if we keep the one beacon? And et cetera. I don't know if I'm making any sense or not on that. The other concern is, is five years back enough to cover um what may come back from a liability standpoint? The deductibles on the auto, et cetera, are very similar. The deductible on the errors and omissions is much different. Twenty-five thousand with EMC. And where did I write?
I believe we quoted the liability with zero deductible.
So again, if we have one client with EMC, we could be open for an additional twenty-five thousand with the pool. Zero, as long as we're following advice. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, and there there's a lot to um, I hate to say guesstimate and forecast it what's going to occur. And I'm certainly open to other people getting input.
I think, Don, when you and I discussed, we were, we were leaning toward a three-year retro. Plus that, your opinion was changed. Also, five that's a one-time.
I would not do less than five, though. But we know we got issues going back there. I follow that. It's the same as Sherri. I I think there's some value in the one. At the very least, I would keep that and look at a different different proposal, taking leaving the, you know, the building in and taking all the equipment and everything out that one beacon covers.
Is one beacon better for the medical equipment?
All equipment and vehicles and everything.
The best part of one beacon is, is it covered for what you're actually doing, you know, the medical liability, not so much the buildings and things like that. It's is that okay, Sherri? I guess, why is, why is one beacon one, why is?
Dan did send that spreadsheet.
Susan, drive down.
That's okay. Two of them. I saw it this morning and I
Hold that mic a little closer.
Voice is always so loud anyhow. Anyhow, to to in the past, when we, when when Paul and I first began this whole insurance thing, what we found was that um the insurance that the county had us covered with didn't cover certain things, you know, like um it didn't, it didn't cover, like, I think, oh, that's generator issues that, like, generators. There was no coverage for that. So we had, so the county had to pay that whole thing. I I questioned this guy, he involved with the with the department about the medical liability, driving insurance. We'll talk about that question in a minute. And it was just never um really good defined insurance for for medical liability, the medical um aspect of it. So um, we discussed um switching to what was called FirePAC back then with the county commissioner Roger, and he um agreed that FirePAC was a better overall one of the things that that pretty, maybe a little childish, but they have a lot of no-fault coverage. So for instance, we had a um, an E P that took a laptop through the ambulance dropped it, just that fingered it and dropped it, broke it into a one-hundred-and-one piece. FirePAC covered that. So they, you know, it's kind of a no-fault thing. So obviously, they'll probably give you insurance covering if you happen to break it, you know, during the line of duty, but just little things like that.
Can I, can I ask you and and Paul, how often are you guys experiencing, you know, the break in? The reason I ask is, is it often? Is it a couple times a year? Is it?
I think for me, it would just be a few times. You know, we had the, I mean, a few times, one or two times a year, but that doesn't mean that we can't be on a boat tomorrow and drop a twenty-five thousand dollar, you know, um laptop into the river or something, but um
I guess that's why I'm happy. Five hundred dollars, you know, and that that costs a little more. And I'm wondering if we would be better off, you know, just have one or two laptops breaking, just paying for that as opposed to having an insurance hold. It's it's like a car, five hundred dollars, did that on a car.
I think there's a decision that you guys need to make, but um I do, I like the the, I do um in comparison to what what the county has before, with what the county has and the wirepad beacon one, I I believe that the beacon one is a better, is a better overall um insurance coverage. But I do have a couple of questions, if I may, um, to maybe to Lynn. Was one of the things that that beacon one does is it it supplies a errors and omissions for um Paul and I, our medical director, and everybody that's sitting and all the commissioners. And I didn't, I haven't, wasn't able to see anything about errors and omissions in the, in the information that Dan sent.
So the errors and omissions coverage is So the errors and omissions coverage is included in our governmental liability. So everybody who serves as a full-time, part-time employee, the elected and appointed officials and volunteers while they're acting at the direction of the county are all covered parties for general liability, errors and omissions. Though, well, law enforcement, we're not talking about law enforcement. But so yes, you, as long as you're acting in the capacity granted to you by the county, then you're, you're a covered party.
And the, the other part of the errors and omissions would be it's, I hate to use, I don't know how to say, HIPAA violations that were committed. And I, I don't want to say that no fault, but by accident or by.
Sure. Yep, that, that, that would fall under that general, that governmental liability slash errors and omissions, directors, officers, all of that. So we don't have separate coverages for that. It's all blanketed under the one coverage.
Okay, very good. And then the medical liability, is that the same thing?
Yep. So that falls under the governmental liability document also. And so as long as we are acting, you know, our EMTs, paramedics, things like that, as long as they're acting in their roles as paramedics, then they're covered.
Does that, that, does that include medical director?
So the medical directors usually aren't actually involved in rendering care. So the medical director would be covered in his administrative capacity where he makes choices about administrative things and things like that. Now, if he's out there actually rendering care, making decisions on care, do we intubate, do we not intubate? Things like that, then what we would do, typically we see relationships where they have their own medical malpractice coverage because there's a lot more specialized components when you're talking about a medical doctor actually rendering care. And so that's, if he's actually, you know, involved in the care rendering process, then we would want to talk about that. But typically our medical directors are more administrative in capacity. And so we cover them under the regular, regular governmental liability document.
Okay, very good. Yeah. He, what he does, he sets procedures and guidelines for our treatment. Doesn't necessarily, you know, treat patients for Yankton County E S. Although, and if he were to ever, in a weird situation, he has a medical item for that. But I would, it was more of the errors and omissions and the, and the lawsuits covering a malpractice kind of situation. Okay. And then the, the other thing that I saw on a couple of things that I, one thing I saw in the spreadsheet was that I couldn't really distinguish ambulance portable equipment on there. I saw emergency management portable equipment on the spreadsheet. That's all included in there or, or not?
Sure. So we took, there were some coverages when we got the schedules that were just line item coverages like that. And so we quoted them as emergency management. What we can do to make it less, so unless, the only reason we wouldn't change the description is if Patty uses the, the contribution amounts to attribute to a certain budget line item. But honestly, what we could do is package that so it would just say portable equipment with no sublimit, you know, whatever the deductible is and stuff like that.
Okay. And then the only big thing for me is drivers of the ambulance and the age of those drivers. Meaning that there are many times where a non-county employee will drive an ambulance. Say we have a critical patient in, in Westerville, we will ask Westerville Fire or First even deputies or law, for any law enforcement officer to drive the ambulance back to the car. Are they going to be, would they be covered?
Yep. Their auto liability coverage would pick up any claims arising out of the auto liability. And then, so when you have non-employees or non-volunteers of the county, so the general liability that we would have to investigate that because it would, it would fall to, okay, well, can we meet them a volunteer for the county when they're acting in that capacity? But the auto liability, as long as they're a permissive user, anybody driving a county-owned auto is covered for auto liability coverage.
Okay. And then the, the, the other question about driving would be the age. Is there an age limit?
So what we say is you need to make sure that you're following what the child labor laws say. And then if there's any other statutory we ourselves don't say nobody under the age of eighteen or nobody under the age of sixteen. We have recommendations.
That happened years ago, we, we had a, a age limit of twenty-one on the driving coverage. And one of the reasons we would like that, the beacon one coverage was because it was kind of up to us.
Yeah.
So if we were to go back to twenty-one, I'd probably lose two or three, I have to elect two or three part-time.
No. We don't even collect a schedule of drivers. We don't do driver background checks. We leave that up to our members to make sure that the people operating their equipment are up to par and, and following their own personnel policies for making those decisions.
Okay, very good. Okay, those, those are the questions that I had jotted down now. I don't know if I answered your darn question.
Yeah, it seems like it seems like the two are pretty similar. You might have a little bit lower deductible on on breakage. Lynn, for, for Steve's question, if one of his guys has a laptop and they break it, that's covered, I assume, correct?
So if we've got the miscellaneous unscheduled property, which I believe we have quoted, that would be on the mobile equipment schedule. Then yeah, we would just tuck it under there and then whatever the limits, up to whatever the scheduled limit is. And then whatever the applicable deductible is. And any of those coverages, we can change those deductibles to meet, you know, your needs. And then if you want some coverage at replacement costs versus some at actual cash value, we can do that also. We just need to make sure that the coverage is written the way you want it.
That makes sense.
And then I have one last question. I'm going to turn it over to Paul was, what is the, the, the maximum liability coverage that we would have as a, as a department? And I, because I, one of the, everybody knows, one of the horrible things with, with being in medical is things that people do is they like to sue because it's part of the, you know, I, I, it's part of the grievance process, trying to, you know.
Yep.
So what is, not that we have any. But what, what kind of coverage or liability or blanket or umbrella do we, do we have?
So, sure. The limit would be whatever the county chooses. So if the county chooses a three million dollar limit, then, then it's three million dollars. If you want the six, then we would do the six. We do have some entities that have a different line of coverage for like law enforcement. We haven't yet parceled out a separate line for like our ambulances or our fire department. So it would be basically whatever the county chooses to go with as far as the, the three million, the six million, the one million, whichever you want. And that's just the limit. The limit is the limit. And you would have that for each occurrence, so each lawsuit, for as many lawsuits as you have.
Okay, very good. And minimal, I think the minimal required is I have to have a total of three. I'd like to have more than three million, but that's, I think that's what it looks for.
What do you have now? Do you have six?
I have six. I think there's six.
So your recommendation would be?
There is, is it six? Okay.
So, so my, my question to you, it, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong here. Yours is a max cap of eight billion. Again, five medical lawsuits. Your cap is eight, is that correct? So if we had, if we had three lawsuits for four million dollars each for twelve, you would only pay eight. And, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn. This is six million per occurrence, is that correct? Not, not an aggregate amount?
Correct. The only coverage line that you have, you would have an aggregate with, with the risk pool is the cyber. Otherwise, we have no other aggregate limits. You get your per occurrence limit every time for as many times as you have claims in, in that coverage year.
So hypothetically, Steve gets sued four different times and each the ambulance hypothetically gets sued four different times and gets awarded six million for each one of them. It's as long as it's a separate occurrence.
Right. Yep. There would be the six million available for each time.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yep.
I, I think I've got it right, but I'd like to think Paul is standing there eagerly waving his seven questions.
Paul, I'm going to jump in real quick. The E and O deductible, Lynn? I missed that.
So the only deductibles on the SDPA coverage is there's a three thousand dollar law enforcement deductible, zero dollar deductible for everything except employment-related matters. And the employment-related claims are five thousand unless you call the hotline.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul. Sorry. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. One of the questions, like for me, most of, or all my employees out of the area are volunteers. So when search and rescue goes on missions, when our squad, skywar people go out, do the weather watching, stuff like that. When they lose their personal equipment, because we don't have anything to replace them costs. As an example, we've had a gentleman responding to a medical call out by Riverside Acres, met a gravel truck. Off road, his oil pan, he ruined the motor in the car. One beacon paid for, required a motor replacement. We've had guys, gals drop their cell phones at the river on the rescue. And there is no charge or no deductible for the replacement cost on that. So I mean, for me, looking at the volunteers who do all the hard work. For one thing, this is kind of their payment if something happens. A lot of the other questions Steve had already had asked. I know that we had several lightning strikes through the years on repeater towers. And before we switched to one beacon, you know, that was twenty-five hundred to three thousand bucks. We almost weren't able to replace stuff because at the time it wasn't like, the insurance was two thousand deductible. But yet the county didn't have the budget to pay for it. So it was like, do we replace it or you don't? I guess if, I, I'm, I guess what you guys decide to do. You know, not a problem, but the thing is, is that if we do lose a piece of equipment, are we going to be right away a piece of property that needs to be replaced without having because we're not budgeting it right now for the higher rentals or the cost of replacing a piece of equipment. And I'm not saying either one isn't. Changes. So other than that, to me, that, that was a question I have about the volunteers. All the other questions away, so.
Way to go, Steve. Was that a question you were going to ask her?
Lynn, did you hear my question?
Okay. So I think what you're asking is if we have any, basically blanket personal property coverage for volunteers.
Right.
Okay. So we can, we can do that. We would make it a line item on the mobile equipment. We don't have anything built in to the, into the coverage document presently, no. But we could, we could add a line item that would just be personal property of volunteers. And if you wanted a sublimit, we could do that. Or if you wanted just a, a full limit and then we would have access to that full limit. Yeah, we can, we can do that, but we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have anything that's just included.
Because I know like last, again, not this, on a different side of the last, twenty nineteen, we had the flood. We borrowed a pump from another community to have another area. But they ruined the pump, the one beacon. Sixty-five hundred dollars for the new pump that we had to pay for, it wasn't in my budget, but one beacon, five hundred dollars. And I'm not saying, again, I'm just trying to give you examples of what we have gone through. Fortunately, our office has a little few more claims than his office because we do more than his office. So.
Of course.
Does the pool insurance have commandeering insurance?
Can you say that again?
Does the pool have commandeering insurance?
Sure. So basically on the, that would be under the auto liability. So it would be auto liability, we would pick up vehicles that are in your care custody and control. And then I would have to go back and look at what our auto physical damage coverage affords for those types of vehicles. I can't, we haven't had that situation, so I haven't had to read that coverage part in a long time. So I can't, I can't tell you exactly what the coverages would be.
Okay.
My knee, my knee jerk would be we probably treat it as a leased borrowed or, a leased or borrowed or hired auto. And then it would get actual cash value coverage and the deductibles based on whatever your schedule is that you have your other vehicles covered at. And I think it's primarily five hundred and a thousand for conflict collision.
Okay. Because I, as an example, when we have a person go missing in the river, we need more.
Yeah.
We could commandeer, I've actually commandeered other people to help. Our insurance covers their boat in case it runs into a rock or something like that, or a jet ski gets damaged. And we've had insurance to cover that, so.
Yeah, I can, um, this afternoon, if I've got a few minutes, I'll log into the coverage document and I can shoot an email back and let you know what the commandeering language is under the property and the liability sides.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Your department ever look at that, Jim? Or is that something that would be pertinent to your department? Commandeering a vehicle or not?
Forty-three years I haven't.
Okay. I've seen it in the movies.
It's not common.
Okay.
Did you have any questions about the jail or anything?
No, I, I think Ryan at a degree and Lynn too, that law enforcement activities in jails are a high exposure for liability. The stuff like, I don't have volunteers, but if I did, or if somebody loses a cell phone, I think we just self-insure that and pay for it. It's the right thing to do. But liability, liability coverage, the better.
Sounds like you agree six million. That's what I'm. Well, as right now where you're at, you don't want to go lower than that.
I think that's, that's more than adequate. Not, I don't, I don't know. Lynn would probably know more the history of what awards have been in my book.
Yeah, it's not, so the jurisdictional part plays a huge role federally. We're seeing slightly higher verdicts than some of the local verdicts. But, you know, cultural influence is huge. And so, you know, there's, it just depends on the circumstances, situations, the jury at, you know, at the, at the time. We have actually, over the past couple of years, we're seeing more claims resolved via settlement. Just because people don't want to wait so long to go to trial. So they're, they're more willing to engage in some mediations and stuff like that. So we haven't had, um, now I'm going to have to knock on wood and, and hope for the best. We have had one million dollar claim paid out in the past four years since I've been on this side of the, the risk pool. So.
What are we thinking?
Based off their input, I think definitely six million. Which is easy to compare to with what we have now.
We ready to kind of go through?
You bet. Yep, go ahead, Don.
Dan and I spent quite a bit of time going through this and, and I quit back and forth, which is the best. I went back and forth, and which is the best? And I guess that I'd look at and put quite a bit of weight on was ultimate service you can offer. After being able to call in and get help, how to do things. Has pluses and minuses. Could be a plus. Changes that are recommended and and or if you don't like the recommendation. Or if you don't like the recommendation, or you don't get it done in the timeframe or or whatever. I put a lot of emphasis on the recommendations of the auditor, the ambulance service, EMS and sheriff. High liability departments, probably not the auditor. The other three have highly recommended that we stay with the concept of insurance. The look back to me is is a big issue. It would seem like five years would be, would be plenty of time, but but we do have issues that are still on the table dating back to two thousand two or five years you want to get. And so that seems like some liability that we need to consider. The linebacker policy to cover basically the commissioners. Then then I wonder about the pool assessment. As as I recall, the entire net worth of the pool was twenty or thirty million dollars. Is that what we think we talked about it at our last meeting? Lynn, what's what's the bottom line funds available to pay claims from the pool?
So if needed, all of that forty million dollars would be liquidated to pay claims from the pool. But this is why the pool purchases reinsurance coverage. So the pool's exposure is limited to the deductible selected by the board of directors during the reinsurance renewal process. So so for like wind and hail claims, we have a one point five million dollar retention. All other peril property claims, we have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar retention. And then for liability claims, all liability claims, the pool has a five hundred thousand dollar retention. And then reinsurance pays the rest.
Steve came over and pointed out a whole point that are now jail property custody.
There has to be pretty significant amount of losses across the state before that four hundred, forty million dollars would be but I I I really think the look back is a big issue. We're down to a very low five percent difference in in cost. And I like the local service. Being able to go to the auditor and and so I I guess I'd probably support staying where we're at.
Other comments?
I think there's a lot to be said about having coverage back to two thousand two or two thousand three, given that there appear to be some problems in that timeframe.
You're not gonna do a pro bono for the county?
I don't think I have enough time in my day to do that.
It sounds like we're leaning toward keeping the insurance we have. I guess I'd ask that we at least add some cybersecurity coverage for us. I I think that would be a wise decision for an extra twelve hundred and eighteen dollars. It's gonna happen sooner or later. When? I don't know. But I think that's an important thing.
I certainly support that.
Yeah. Additionally, we haven't, from from my understanding, maybe you can fill us in as EMC does offer like training opportunities for driving and mitigation. I don't think we've used them ever. And that's something we're gonna, we should do a better job of since it's included in the quote.
Yeah, I mean, EMC is gonna offer their loss control services to you, you know. I say free of charge. They're not gonna charge you for it. Obviously, it's built into the rate. You know, very similar to the pool. As far as the hotline, I'm not aware of a hotline that they would have on the EPL side of things.
Ryan, to be fair, on your services for that, if we don't apply them to our operation, you probably are not gonna
In terms of like the loss controls, is that what you're talking about? You know, I've been around a long time in term, you know, with Nationwide for fifteen years. They'll go through a list of recommendations, potentially depending on your operation. Maybe two, it may be ten, it may be twenty for the size of the county, who knows? And then they'll list a critical, you know, general recommendation. And most of the type of general recommendations are FYIs for your information, you should do this. The critical recommendations are things that they're gonna want you to do. I would assume the pool would be in a similar way. Now, what's the cost related to that depends on the recommendation I, you know, at that point.
Thank you.
Yep. Just just to add one more quick thing on the cyber side of things, One Beacon does provide cyber for search and rescue and the emergency medical.
Yeah, I was thinking we we should have coverage for our operation here. And Sheriff, I don't know, do you have any type of coverage that you're aware of on your and then, you know, we have the extension office and then a person working at conservation and and there's a lot of, lot of areas of susceptibility that I think we need to take.
I would one hundred percent agree.
Other comments?
A lot of moving parts, but I'd say as from what I'm seeing, I'm comfortable where we're at. I think if we want to I guess if if anyone wanted to explore this further for me, I would need to see quotes pulling out what One Beacon covers. I think there's some merit in that. It it may at the end of the day be a little bit higher premium, but we're gonna be paying you know, even if if going with public assurances, let's say seventy percent of the premium, I think we make that up in in what has been covered. I had a discussion with Paul on some of the things that have been it's been used for, and I think it's paid for itself. But again, I think, I guess I'll just reiterate for right now, I'm comfortable if if this were to be pursued. Some of the things that we would need is a line item of personal property for the volunteers. A revamped quote removing the the equipment from emergency management ambulance leaving in the buildings and checking some of that commandeering coverage. Seem to be the one things that may be driving it, but.
Dan, any other comments?
You know, one, one area that I think we do have a lot of exposure to at the county is employment practices. And we have several lawsuits right now that could have been avoided with a similar, and I know you guys don't offer anything like that, but we've been remiss about not further exploring human resources. And I know we've redone our handbook, but that that may be something we have to continue to look at.
And some of these you know, benefits of the hotlines, I I think there's merit to them, there's benefit. I guess I haven't seen enough to get me off of, off of neutral, I guess.
All right, I'll make just a couple of comments. If it weren't for our concern with what Don had mentioned, the two thousand six challenge, I think I'd switch today. Keep One Beacon and go with the pool, keep the six million. Because when you looked at the vehicle cost, just for the ambulance, they're about fifteen hundred apiece. So that's six thousand right there that would come off of that pool quote. Trucks and stuff were about five hundred because all of you, all your trucks are under One Beacon as well. Yep, so you got a few of those. So you're looking up, probably taking off ten thousand off that quote. And that doesn't include the reduction in liability for the pool quote. So I think next year, we need to start a little earlier on this and give it another look next year. So since there's not going to be a motion to change, we've already decided to stay with EMC and One Beacon. We made that decision. Is there a motion to change? All right, there being no motion to change, we won't be taking any further action on insurance. And we met our challenge we set for ourselves to make this decision by March first. So looking at the agenda, we are at item number six, public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. Entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks for coming.